Welcome to our podcast. This is another recorded episode of Stay Classy San Diego, sponsored by Max Lux Media at maxluxmedia.com and Barn Time Productions at barntimemusic.com. With your host being myself, Steve Wire, a freelance reporter. This podcast is dedicated to healthy dialogue around all things local policy in the North County San Diego area. Join us weekly as we interview political leaders, analysts, professionals, and community members on issues ranging from homelessness, to housing density, to elections. Today, we have Julie Thunder on the show. Julie is running for city council in Encinitas's District 3. Julie is a 37-year resident of Cardiff by the Sea. She and her husband still live in their first home and plan to stay in the area for the rest of their lives. They're invested in Cardiff and Encinitas with their time, their money, and their hearts. Julie earned a Bachelor of Science degree in applied mathematics from San Diego State University, as well as a high school teaching credential. She was a software developer in the local defense industry, and then ran her own consulting business from home while raising her family. She served as the Cardiff Soccer League Board of Directors, managed several club soccer teams in various leagues, and spent years as the team manager of the La Costa Canyon High School surf team. Later, when her girls were in college, she was the office manager of a medical office near Scripps Hospital. And she's been the co-publisher of The Encinitas Current, a newsletter that shares local stories and current events. So today, we're going to jump right into the issues. Julie is running for city council, as we just discussed. Her opponent, Joy Lines, who's the sitting city council member for District 3, unfortunately couldn't make it today. So I wanted to start off by talking development and talking housing, but I think that I know a lot of your views already, Julie, and I know that we've had these conversations before, including in previous forums. So I think the way that I understand your position is sort of this notion that, you know, you're not somebody who's an MB, you're not in my backyard, you're not anti-development. It's sort of the fact that you're really not a fan, though, of some of the specific projects that were selected as part of the housing element. So these projects are on the city's table. Sort of explain that nuance in your position where it's, you're not an MB, you're not one of these, like, you know, people try to label you sort of this anti-development crazy person. But at the same time, you are concerned by some of the housing element projects, and you think that they represent a material threat to our quality of life. Go ahead.
In Encinitas, when we were told that we have to upzone and build multifamily housing, or the R30 high-density three-story housing, what the city council did is they tried with a couple of measures, Measure T, Measure U. Voters declined both of them. The voters did not want to upzone sections of the city to three-story apartments. And these, almost all of the projects are for rent-only apartments. So what they did is, when the residents of Encinitas voted no on upzoning these 15 selected properties, this is back a couple of years ago, what the city essentially did is overturn that vote and submitted the plan that we voted no on in Measure U, submitted that to the state, and the state passed it as our housing element. So now, what that did is gave the, all of the developers the go-ahead to build quickly and with very little oversight. They don't have to go through the normal checks and balances that a non-housing element developer has to go through. So what you have is you have more density coming to each project than you would ever have gotten and that anyone ever predicted. And you have more forgiveness for things like extra parking affordability. There's less affordability than we thought we would get in these also. And you don't have any extra money for infrastructure, including road upgrades for traffic, schools, and guess what? Water. We're under another threat of drought, or we're in a drought, and it looks worse as we go forward. And yet, the state is forcing these cities, including us, to build, build, build. But they're, so on one hand, they're saying, "We're in a drought, conserve water, cut back." And on the other hand, "Build, build, build." Well, that just doesn't make sense. My philosophy is smart growth over forced growth. Slow it down, pace it a little bit, so we can meter the changes that we need to make to adjust for the people who already live here, so we can make adjustments for their quality of life. For example, traffic. And schools. There's no new schools being built for these kids. Eventually, the property tax rates will catch up, and the districts will be able to build schools. But there's going to be families moving into, let's take the apartments at Sunshine Gardens. There's going to be families moving into there, thinking that their kids will go to the nearby elementary school. But if they come into that apartment building late, and it's already overcrowded, they'll get sent across town, maybe up to Lucadia, or back over to Village Park. So it's, that's where I come in. I believe in smart growth. You don't have to approve everything quickly, slow it down, and let's catch up to the changes that we need to do before all this happens.
Sure. So there's 15 projects, but I want to get specific. So some of the projects have been green-lighted recently that have gone through the city council include the Goodson Project, which, that was a whole situation with the state, and, you know, the city was threatened with legal action. But the Goodson Project is going forward. We also have Clark Avenue Project, which has been discussed in a couple of our recent podcasts. We also have the Maria Village Project, which just recently got green-lighted by the city council. And now, we have another project, 485 units, that's possibly coming into our city, the Baldwin Project. And that, the Planning Commission is still in deliberations. They continued their, they sort of postponed making a decision until next month. So I want to get your-
Can I make a comment about that?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
Isn't that interesting? Baldwin is the largest of the 15 projects of 485. And isn't it interesting that they postponed making that decision until after the election? I'm just throwing that out there.
Sure. Yeah.
Because it's going to be really bad news.
Point taken.
It's going to be a lot of people really upset.
Well, I want to talk about, I mean, we don't have to talk about all the projects if you don't want to, but why do, why do these projects, the specific ones we mentioned, why do these projects sort of concern you? Like, what, for people who aren't maybe as familiar with the ins and outs of what's going on with our city, sort of like, why, why would you be opposed to the Clark Project, the Goodson Project, the Maria Village Project?
Well, Goodson, fire danger risk. Done. Period. It's on a two-lane road. The other side of it has, the ingress and egress is right now kind of an alley. And there's not room to expand that. So it's going to be a one-way, long driveway to get into this project with 250 apartments. And the affordable units in the project, some of them are smaller than a master bedroom. They're surprisingly small for something to help our families that are struggling. I find that surprising. So that's not, well, number one is the fire risk. Olivenhein is at greatest risk of wildfire for the areas of our city. And a wildfire would typically start on the east side, where there's more open space, right? And come towards town with Santa Ana winds. And you just have, you're just creating another 250 families that have to get out of a bottleneck situation, while you have everybody else in Olivenhein trying to come down Rancho Santa Fe Road, which is hard enough to navigate in an emergency, with every other car towing a horse trailer and trying to rush out of there. So I have a problem with that. And by the way, the city council could have denied that project on that fire safety risk.
Goodson.
Could have denied Goodson on that. That's one of the things that, one of the reasons that the state will allow a city to deny a state-certified housing element project.
How many units was that one against? Two?
250. It got dropped down from 280, 287. Don't quote me on that, but now it's at 250. So, and you mentioned Clark. The problem with Clark, again, is access. So Clark is in a spot, it's not a terrible spot to put an apartment complex. It's next to the freeway, but it's not really a desirable spot for homes. But there's no road to it. All the roads to it are small, little residential streets. And every one of those streets has multiple families that aren't prepared for the amount of traffic that's going to come through. So that's, to me, that's the biggest problem with Clark. I guess they also have a low parking requirement there that's going to, could create problems down the road.
All right. And I want to circle back to Baldwin, because you kind of threw up a big red flag when I mentioned that. So why is this such a bad idea?
To build 485 units right there?
Yeah.
That intersection is where Sunshine Gardens is. Can you visualize that? It's where Quail Gardens Drive intersects with Encinitas Boulevard. So it's a little bit up the road from Smart and Final, for anyone listening that's trying to imagine where that is. There used to be a nursery there called Sunshine Gardens. At that intersection, there'll be over 800 new apartments when all this is done. The Baldwin Project that you just mentioned is half of that. So for 485 units, that'll be the biggest thing in the entire city. It'll be the biggest structure. It'll be the most housing units in one small space. And the worst thing they did, and this has got people riled, upriled from all sides of this issue, is they laid it out, the complex of 485 units is laid out in four large buildings, with like, the rec, I think the rec center's in the middle of all that. One building in the back is the affordable, contains all the affordable units. So it, it just doesn't sound good to anybody. You know, to, usually, I mean, everybody knows now that you, when you're going to do affordable units, you mix it in so that families blend together, and you don't feel like you're outcast out to the back 40.
Sure. So I want to just give you a little gentle pushback here. So on our last podcast episode, we had Bruce Ayers, candidate for District 4, and his opponent Pamela Rudella. And one thing that Pam noted is, or she brought up, is sort of this notion that voters, for a while in Encinitas, have been sort of kicking the can down the road when it comes to meeting the state's affordable housing requirements. So just like, you know, they see development, she said, sorry Pam, I'm butchering what you said, but they sort of, you know, they vote no, because they don't like the project, they don't like this project, they don't like that project. And sort of, we end up in a situation where we're sort of at the last, at the last fence here, where like, we have to do something to meet these requirements. And so, sort of, the notion suggested there is, you know, these projects may be imperfect, but like, at the same time, like, if we're going to meet these numbers, if we're not going to get sued, we have to do something. So what's your response to the, sort of, that school of thought of, you know, this isn't a great option, but it might be our only option for saving us from trouble with the state?
I think the best way to answer that is, if I were on council the last couple of years, I would have never approved such a small inclusionary rate. The inclusionary rate is the number, is the percentage of affordable units a developer has to include in his projects on these housing element projects. These, they're called HEU. These HEU projects are actually under the authority of the state.
Sure.
The state kind of usurped our authority on these projects. But we got to pick what the affordability rate should be. And now, that's when our Planning Commission recommended 50% affordability rate, which is what I think, which is, I think, the reason that Bruce Ayers was fired from Planning Commission, because they were able to prove that it's doable. But the city council, every five members of our council sat and listened to testimony from their own Planning Commission recommending that they require developers to build 50% of their units as affordable, which would have satisfied the state much sooner with less impacts on the city. It means we could have built less and still gotten to our affordability numbers quicker.
Yeah.
The council didn't just say no to them, they said they picked the lowest number, 20%. So when I say what I would have done on council, I would have held out. Of course, you need three to get anything through, but I never would have voted for 20%. I would have said, "Let's, let's look at 40%." But, you know, if 50 is impossible, if you've got one staff member telling you 50 is impossible, but you have the Planning Commissioner saying you can do 50, I would have said, "Let's try 50. Let's put it out there. Let's shelf this decision, or let's consider 40 or 30 and step into this." I don't, I was, that was very frustrating to me. So if we were building more affordable units in each project, we would have to build less units in total in the city.
Sure. So I get the feeling that the response from council would probably be, and this was along the lines of what Tony, Tony Kranz said in our first podcast episode, is, you know, at some point, there has to be an incentive for these developers to build. They have to make a profit. And if you make the rate too high, the percentage of affordable too high, they're not going to have an incentive to build. There's, there's going to be nothing in it for them. And he even mentioned, I think, during the forum, that it was sort of magical thinking to think that we could push close to 50%, as some suggest. So sort of, what's your response to this notion that, you know, there's, there's not any feasibility to these numbers, to the percentage at that level?
Math isn't magical.
Yeah.
These properties, most of them were agricultural properties that got upzoned. So the most they could have had, the most that could have been built there is three or four houses per acre. So a normal subdivision in Encinitas, right? When they upzoned them to R30, think of the value of the property. If you can build, imagine if you can build 20 ounces on a property, or 200 apartments. And those, those 20 houses, the developer builds them, sells them, and moves on. Makes his money, moves on. The 200, I think was the example I said. The 200 apartments, the developer builds them, rents them out, and gets annual income from it. So a property that's zoned R40 is worth millions more than a property that's zoned R3. So just by the upzone, those, the developers, or I should say the property owners, but they often go hand in hand, they became quite wealthy just in that action. And that was a gift to them, that the state forced us to give them.
Sure. So if that's the case, if there's still profit to be made at that level of affordability, at the percentage that you suggest, then what do you think, like, do you think the council knew this and chose to ignore it? I mean, what do you think was the council's motivation for-
I don't know, because they, they never discussed to that detail. Because there's no debate on our council. That was another 5-0 vote. So when, when you have a council, or a board, or a school board, or a group of electeds that all think alike, and they're all from the same side of political issues, which this one is, you get very little debate. Somebody proposes something, and everyone says, "Yeah, good idea, click, good idea, click, good idea, click." 5-0, 5-0, 5-0. Our 5-0 votes are well over 90%, happen over 90% of the time. That means you don't have good, healthy debate. And I think a board, or a council, that has a 4-1, or a 2-3 division, I think is much healthier for the people. Yeah, things can get contentious, but that's how you work things out. And you come to solutions that have more compromise in them, other than what feels like being rolled over by the council for some residents.
I want to move to some of a separate topic, which is some of the hate mail you've been getting recently. So, yeah, just for our listeners and for our viewers, recently, Julie's district has been on the receiving end of a number of interesting advertisements coming from a political action committee, the Service Employees International Union. And Julie, I don't know if you want to show-
Well, I'll show them briefly. These two came, and that's enough. Everybody doesn't want to read them. I looked them up-
And how much did they spend on these flyers?
$15,000 for two flyers.
Sure.
$15,000. So the, it's not new for unions to be involved in politics in Encinitas, because our sheriff's deputies belong to their own union. It's called the DSA, Deputy Sheriff's Association. By the way, they endorse me, happy to report. And our firefighters belong to a firefighters' association, and by the way, they endorse me. But here's the difference. Although those two unions, the sheriffs and the firefighters, do negotiate with the city, the sheriffs indirectly, and they do endorse candidates on some races, thankfully mine. What they don't do is go after candidates, because they recognize that they're going to be at the negotiating table if that person wins, is elected.
Yeah. Can you actually, I think it'd be interesting for you to sort of read to people, like, what's in these flyers?
Well, let me finish my point with SEIU. This is the first time a labor union, like SEIU, has engaged in Encinitas politics and spent money here. So it's really interesting, because we have over 100 employees that are a member of the union. So I don't, I don't get it. I don't get where they're coming from. They also endorsed my opponent. So the only, the only logical conclusion is they're expecting something from her in salary negotiations coming up. Yeah. I don't know if that's true, but you have to put the pieces of the puzzle together. So I'll read some of what it says.
Or you want me to read them?
Yeah, well, no, read them. So one says that I'm a bizarre extremist, and that I don't fit the community. And here's one. It says, "I'm backed by this group called Vote Conservative San Diego." I'm endorsed by them, and I was endorsed by them early. And if you go to their website, they didn't even endorse in our city. They took no action in our city. It says right there, "No recommendation for District 3 and Encinitas, also for District 4."
But they're supposedly this, like, far-right extremist-
Yeah, they, this is the new buzzword, bizarre extremism. The other thing they said is that I oppose the safe parking lot for homeless families. And if you look on my website, Steve, there's, on my homeless page and on my videos page, there's a link to my addressing the council exactly on this issue. And I'm not opposing the lot. I never did oppose the lot. What I opposed was the process that our city went through to put that lot in. And I opposed placing it next to children's programs. And I'll always oppose that, no matter what. I don't care what it is.
What's the rest of the flyer look like?
The rest of the flyer is that, let's see. "I teamed up with a PAC called Build a Wall." I didn't. I don't even know who they are. It says, "I'm endorsed by people, again, fighting for biblical values." By the way, biblical values to me aren't bad, but I'm not involved with them. "I fought to stop homeless outreach programs," so they're back, going back to the homeless lot, yeah. And that Julie Thunder is disturbingly unfit for Encinitas. Really? So the person who's lived here for 37 years, raised her children here, worked for every volunteer organization in my community, is unfit. But the one that just moved here from Arizona, they're going to endorse and put $15,000 towards to keep her in office.
Yeah.
So I just hope, I just hope people see what's going on.
So I mean, what do you make of this? Like, how, like, where do you think this is coming from? Like, these accusations against you? Like, where, like, who is this coming from? Where is this coming from? And what are they trying to accomplish?
SEIU's been, well, our city employees have belonged to SEIU for several years. I can't find the beginning, the year that it started, that they started with SEIU. But SEIU never engaged before, and there's been plenty of council races. So I'm not sure that this engagement is about future salary negotiations, although it could be. But one thing has changed in our town. We have a local, we have a person that's come to town. She started our local Encinitas BLM, or it might have been called Black Lives Matter. I think it was called BLM Encinitas, and then the name got changed to Encinitas for Equality. Yeah, so I don't, I don't think I should say her name, but she is, she states on her LinkedIn account that she's at SEIU organizer. So she's gotten very involved with the mayor. She's in all, most of the mayor's mailpieces, standing next to her often, holding up signs with her. She hosted events for Joy, for my opponent. She's on the Equity Committee. She's gotten involved in housing. Her E4E is now a nonprofit. It's receiving money from the city. It keeps, it just kind of smells bad.
Sure. But just to be clear, you're not, you don't think that Joy Lines, your opponent, is directly behind these flyers, but you believe that the SEIU is endorsing her and opposing you by distributing, by the distribution of these flyers, because they are expecting her to support them in the process of future labor negotiations?
100%. I don't, I don't-
Do you have any proof of that, or?
No, well, yeah. I have their form, SEIU's form, that they turned into the city, showing that they've paid $15,000, it says, quote unquote, "to oppose Julie Thunder." That PACs have to declare who they're advocating for or against. So I absolutely don't think, I'm not accusing Joy of being involved with that. That would be illegal, by the way. Candidates aren't allowed to coordinate with PACs in any direction. So I certainly, I'm not accusing her of that. I'm, but I want people to ask the question, why would a labor union that's never engaged in our politics before suddenly be throwing this kind of money at our race? They really want their current candidate to stay in. Why? I don't know why. I think it's because if they can keep Joy in office, then they keep their majority. And that, and when I say "they," I mean the three council members that have followed Blake Sperrle on all her votes. And that would be, by the way, this is irrelevant of what happens in the mayor's race, and irrelevant of what happens in District 4, Olivenhein. No matter what happens in the mayor's race, Tony Kranz will stay mayor. No matter what happens in D4, Kelly Hensy will still be on council representing D2. That's two members. If Joy Lines wins our race against me, that's three members on council that are from the Catherine Blake Speer, I call it regime, two of them appointed by her, Kelly and Joy. So that's three people on council that will have the majority vote to continue all the programs that frankly, I'm against. And I'm, can tell Bruce Ayers is against some of them. We're aligned on some issues. So I think a labor union, this labor union, SEIU, seems to only engage in far-left politics, and I'm nonpartisan. And if you look at Joy's endorsements and the people she's with at her events, she, I think they're pulling her to the far left. So I think that's what's going on. They want to keep Blake Speer's programs, whatever they are, in place.
Sure. Let's shift topics again. So one thing that came up in the Cardiff Town Council forum that I moderated a few weeks ago with you and Joy, and something that I think a lot of people in your district are concerned about is sort of how, what job the city's doing in terms of things like preserving our open spaces, you know, protecting the environment, protecting, you know, people who live near the wildland urban interface from wildfire risk. And then I think there's also sort of a larger, larger thought of, you know, keeping Encinitas moving in an environmentally friendly direction. You know, we've recently, you know, gotten rolled into a 100% renewable energy plan by the mayor. But I think sort of, people want to know where you stand on these sort of environmental issues. People want to know, you know, how, under your leadership, would we be sort of moving in terms of things like preserving open spaces, you know, protecting our reserves? And I just want to kind of give this, this time for you to sort of explain, yeah, some of the solutions you have on that front.
Thank you. On, let's start with open space. The, the council had $1.2 million in an open space acquisition fund. That fund was specifically set up to buy more open space. Years ago, there was a citywide poll taken, or survey, and the number one thing, the one thing in the poll that people wanted more of was open space. More trails on natural land, more gazing out over, you know, sunsets and sunrises, instead of looking at buildings. So we, the city made an open space account, and developers pay open space acquisition fees. So those fees were going into the account. Plus, the council, at the time that they made the account, this is years back, transferred half a million in, but with the developers' fees, that ballooned up to 1.2 million. That fund is now gone, and nobody will explain where the money is. It got just pilfered away. There was a vote. I have it all documented, that they decided not to spend that. So I've been, when I ran for mayor two years ago, I advocated then, and I ran on this issue then, to restore the open space fund, and then come up with a system to continue to build it, so that when there is an opportunity to set aside a section of land and keep it open and undeveloped, that we should do that. And I think, I don't think I'm the only one that thinks that way. I think a lot of people think that way, and I feel strongly about it. It's the only way to keep our wildlife, to keep, to give a home for our wildlife, to keep our native plants going. So we can't, what happened is, when I brought that up, suddenly, my opponent, Joy Lines, offered up the open space resolution. And she's very proud of it. She's running on that. But if you read that resolution, it's filled with "whereas's" and "we like" and "we declare." There's no mention of money and no mention of action. So I would do it differently. I, I want more open space, and I would like to see money carved out so that we're ready to buy it if some becomes available or ready to apply for grants. And you usually have to have your own money available for that. The other thing you mentioned was the electrification plan. So yeah, our city did recently ban natural gas in an effort to go to all-electric citywide. Again, my opponent, Joy, and I'm sorry she's not here. It would have been nice to have her here, to hear her side of this, but since she's not, I'll tell what I know of her side. She was on the Planning Commission, or excuse me, the Environmental Commission, that developed the ban, the natural gas plan. And then she got elevated, appointed- And then she got elevated, appointed to City Council just in time to vote this into law. So what that ban does is it says, "All new construction going forward from the date the ban was enacted a few months ago cannot use natural gas." So any new restaurants that are built, any new apartments, any new housing. In fact, if you rebuild your kitchen, you can't use the natural gas that you already have in it. So they are trying to phase out natural gas. I am a hundred percent against doing that at this time. Only a few cities in California have done it, and only a few cities in, I, we might be the only city in this, in the county of San Diego, actually, that's banned natural gas. Here's why I'm against it. Everything you read on the news and everything we talk about in the city is that we have an affordability crisis, and especially in Encinitas. I have four young adult daughters. None of them are married yet, and they're all trying to figure out how to afford life in Southern California, and it's hard. They're all having, they're all, yeah, they're all struggling with that. I'm living that. So if you take away the cheapest source of heating and cooking fuel, it's gonna make your cost of living go up. So these, over two thousand apartments that are about to be built, that are in the pipeline right now from the housing plan that we talked about earlier, all of those will be all-electric. That just makes everything more expensive for the people that live here. I would have waited. I would have waited until the economy improves. I would have waited till more cities jump in to see how they do it. Our, our mayor and this council has a need to be at the front of everything and to be the first city that does everything. I, I just never see value in that, because things happen along the way. And I think if you look at what other cities are doing, you can make a lot better choices and see how they go. And plus, it would just buy more time for these affordable units to be really affordable if they can use natural gas in their cooking and heating fuel. Uh, the other thing you brought up was, oh, you didn't bring it up. I brought it up in my mind while you were saying it, is the environment in general. I have four daughters and a husband that surf all the time. I'm at the beach all the time, walking and running or paddleboarding. I did, uh, last winter, I was part of organizing the King Tide Challenge, which was a walk on the beach that can only happen a couple of days a year, from Swamis all the way down to La Jolla Shores. I love our nature. I love our beaches, our lagoons. I love what they've done with the Santa Lejo Lagoon, all the wildlife that's come back. I'm seeing the wildlife at my house even, and it's almost a mile away from it. I don't, I think it's time for us to accept that one political party doesn't own love of the environment. I'm nonpartisan, and I don't think there's anybody that wants clean water, clean air, and that wants to take care that our environment stays clean and healthy, so. I don't know. I think that was a roundabout way to answer the original question.
There was one point I wanna give you a pushback on. You said, you know, like when we're talking about renewable energy, the natural gas ban, you've, you're like, you know, why does Encinitas have to be first? I think the mayor probably come back and say, you know, we're trying to make Encinitas sort of this leader, this progressive leader of renewable energy, of pushing towards greener energy, and like, if not us, then, then who, you know? So, uh, I'm interested to know, like, sort of how, because I think we all agree that, you know, we want to, you know, reduce greenhouse gas emissions. You know, we want obviously to move in a greener direction and a greener future. So, but this, this push is just happening too fast for you, is what it sounds like.
Well, especially that one. You cannot force nearly three thousand apartments onto a city, growing it by almost a third overnight. It'll be overnight by the time this is done. We're about to see construction all over town. You cannot do that while you're telling people you have to accept this. We need more affordable here. We need, we need homes for these people that can't afford it. We need homes for our children, while you're making those homes more expensive to live in. It, you, she didn't have to do it. This council did not have to do this now. They could have waited five or ten years. Yes, it's coming that we have to, the state has made a requirement that we have to end natural gas at some future date. Don't ask me that date right now. But, um, they didn't have to do it now. And like, while it can be admirable to be at the forefront of a new policy or be the vanguard of something new and be the leader, where's the cost-benefit analysis in that? What are you comparing to? You're taking, she, they're taking a gamble that this is gonna pay out better for the people of Encinitas. I'm not willing to take that gamble. If, I think elected leaders' jobs is to manage the money and the resources of the city and not have to satisfy their own egos to be at the front or to be the first to do something. I, I would, I take a more cautionary look and wanna make sure that it's all gonna pencil out, and I don't think any of that was done with the natural gas ban.
Sure. I want to talk a bit about, uh, the, um, the same issue that we've been bringing up in the previous podcast. So, uh, there's kind of been this back and forth about, um, Encinitas' crime statistics. Crime, is it up, is it down? The mayor's claiming that it's down. The Sandag numbers kind of tell an interesting story where it's like crime was like up from twenty twenty to twenty-one. The first six month, a period of, of twenty twenty-two, it appears as though it's maybe slightly down, um, but it's still up since twenty eighteen, so.
It's down, down, down.
Uh, with all these statistics that are being bandied about, we've, we've gotten different answers. Cindy and Toni both maintain that crime is down as well. The Cindy Cremona and Toni Kranz who are running for mayor. So I'm, I'm just curious, like, where do you kind of enter that discussion and, sort of, like, first of all, do you think crime is up? And if so, like, what's, what's behind that?
Well, I'm not a crime.
On a, on a local level, too. I know there's like state issues, but I wanna talk local.
Well, the state issues come into play.
Sure.
Because they're saying, the mayor just ran an ad that crime is down since twenty sixteen, coincidentally the first year she became mayor. Well, in two thousand sixteen, there, we didn't have all these soft-on-crime policies. So different things were being registered as a crime. Today, there's a lot of crimes that happen that get forgiven, so they don't make it to Sandag's reporting. But what I see with, um, the comments on your earlier podcasts is that the, the Sandag report did say crime in Encinitas is down three percent. Three percent from what? Our all-time high was last year. So we're down three percent from last year, which is still high. If gas is seven dollars a gallon and it's down by fifty percent, fifty cents, so we're still paying six fifty a gallon, it's still not good. So I, uh, I see with my own eyes and here with my own ears, I'm in downtown Encinitas. I'm over by Target. I've seen the homeless tents. On Leo Mullenfield myself, I've seen, uh, uh, things just happen when you have that. And sorry, I should have added, with those tents I saw, I saw the boxes that they came in, all ripped up and being used for shelter, and I don't know where they came from. I'm not accusing them of stealing them. But it's not, it shouldn't be legal for them to sleep on the field that a bunch of kids are about to show up to play soccer on. And I don't, something happens when you allow transients that have mental problems and drug addiction problems to sleep on the streets of your city. You're gonna invite, if you have more drug users in your city, you're, you're inviting more drug sellers to supply them their drugs. And I think, this is a personal guess, based on what I see, I think that could be a what's going on in Encinitas, because we're seeing a lot more violent crime.
So substance abuse, the drug trade, sort of driving this?
Yeah, yeah. We had, was it seven or eight prostitution arrests?
Yeah, I heard about that.
Did you see that?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
In like a two-week period. When does that happen in Encinitas? That is not okay.
It's out of context, yeah.
That, yeah. It's not okay. We didn't have that before. So I'm, crime may be up, crime may be down, based on whatever the FBI reports on or doesn't report on, and whatever Sandag's willing to put in their report or not, and what the mayor says or not. But I know what I see, and I've lived here for thirty-seven years. There's more stuff happening, and it's not good. And I know owner, business owners from downtown and on El Camino Real, and they're not saying good things either. I mean, the guy that, uh, got caught up in the gunfight.
The coffee shop owner?
El Smith, Iron Smith?
Iron Smith, yeah.
Iron Smith Coffee Shop. I visited that shop and the one next to him a couple of months ago. Those guys have to come to work early to hose off the outside of their walls. That's not right. They're just trying to make their way. They put up some money, opened a shop, paid for inventory. They paid all their state or city business license fees. They shouldn't have to deal with that. It's not right. So I'm, I'm against that.
Well, and I think that on crime and on a number of issues, not just crime, but, you know, I, I wrote an extensive series about the issue of flooding in Lucadia, for instance. We've had, uh, a lot of stories in the past about the, the rail crossings. And I just get this sense from residents, from some residents, I should say, not all, some residents, that there's the perception that the city government, as it's currently constituted, not just the city council, but down to city staff and at a very basic level, is sort of unresponsive to residents' concerns, to residents' needs, to residents' wants. And I'm just curious, like, do you, as a resident, um, I know you're running for office, but as a resident, you sort of share that perception? And then again, it's not, not everyone's perception, but sort of the sense that, um, there's this obliviousness to the on-the-ground needs of residents on the issues of, of crime, of flooding, of the undercrossings. Uh, we, I could go on and on, but uh, you know where I'm coming from with this?
I do.
And we asked, we asked the same question, I think, at the Cardiff Town Council Forum, so. Do you share that perception? And what would you do differently?
Well, I would respond to emails and meet with people. And I would advocate for people in my district and other areas of the city on their issue. Does that mean everybody that sends a letter or an email to a council member is right? And that somebody has to advocate for them? Because everybody's not right. You know, it could be someone complaining because their neighbor didn't trim their tree right. That's not something, you know, you go to town for. But there, I'll, I'll give you an example of, before I give you an example, I've knocked on a lot of doors. And I spend a lot of time at doors when, you know, people in the, you tell them you're running for council, you're out here to meet the neighbors, which is a very uncomfortable thing to do, but you get used to it. Once they soften, at first they're kind of annoyed that, because that someone's at their front door. But once they kind of relax, I get this a lot. I get, "Do you know what happened to me when I tried to complain about blah, 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 blah?" All the time. So I've gotten an earful the last few months of people that feel ignored, feel that whatever they have going on doesn't matter to the council. Is their issue something worthy? I don't know, but I would, I would return the phone call, because that's what you're elected to do. So our council is more focused on state and national issues than they are on residents of Encinitas issues. They're more about passing resolutions to support Prop One like they just did, where they actually quoted in the resolution to urge all Encinitas voters to support something that's on the ballot, which is not only wholly improper, uh, it's borderline illegal, I believe.
Why are other cities doing it, though?
That was it. That's where they crossed over the line, where they said, "Urge Encinitas voters to vote this way." I mean, if you're gonna, if you're a city council and you're gonna do that, why not just pass a resolution to urge Encinitas voters to vote for Catherine Blake Spear for State Senate? Pass another resolution to urge Encinitas voters to vote for this person at council? So, uh, council, uh, members often pass resolutions to support state legislation, and then they send an unofficial letter to the legislators involved with the legislation. But this was actually designed, it was a political stunt, but it was, it's about the voters and what we're about to vote on, which is what I think is improper. But that's my point, that they're more focused on state and national issues than, than doing the work and getting down to business and solving the issues, like you said, with the flooding, uh, with the rail crossings. Those things take work. They take lots of meetings. They take thinking outside the box. They take meeting with attorneys. You have to do the work. If you've been elected to serve the people, then you, you're saying and doing so that I'm willing to do the work, and that work is to represent them, not look good to, uh, politicians at a higher level than me within the state of California.
You think that the Prop One vote was just a political stunt for, for what? For the mayor, or?
Yeah, for the mayor.
I'm not trying to throw words in your mouth, but is that, is that what you're implying? Uh, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hundred percent. She's running on that. That's her whole, her whole race against Matt Gunderson. Is she's drawn the line at Prop One, and whatever anybody thinks about Prop One, she's chosen that issue to draw the line on. That's why she refuses to debate him, because he won't come to her side on that issue, which is strange. So to do a resolution at, to take staff time and the public's time, they did it from the dais as an agenda item at a public meeting to discuss the issue, listen to public input. People came to that council meeting, something like twenty-five, to speak. Out of the twenty-five, all, twenty-three of them asked them not to pass it. And many of those speakers, they weren't debating whether Prop One is good or bad. They were talking about the process of a, of a, of an elected body, a city council, passing a resolution, telling the people of Encinitas how to vote on an upcoming um, ballot issue. That's wholly improper. Yeah, so, and I would, if I run council and, and somebody did that and it became a thing, I would say right away, I, I'm not gonna be involved in this and vote no on it.
Yeah, I mean, like, I think that's like one of the gripes people have, right, is this sort of notion, it's like, you know, twenty-five speakers were opposed to this. I think maybe two, as you said, two or three were in support. And, um, but they voted the way they did anyways, like, is, is there a sense, from what I'm getting from you, is sort of that, uh, there's like this, um, collective, like minds-made-up kind of mentality that comes into chambers when, when the council gets together?
Absolutely. Yeah, it's always like that. You rarely see any one of them vote off of the rest.
Yeah.
It's almost always five oh. And again, there's very little debate or discussion. The, the council members will say something on each item before each vote, but if you actually pay attention, they're not, they're not considering opposing viewpoints. They're just kind of bloviating on why they're voting yes. And this is, uh, take, uh, go back to that Clark project. Ah, there was thirty or forty people in the room. Everybody was against it. It's all the people that live there and will be impacted, and those impacts are real, and those impacts could affect the property values of their home. That's real stuff. People upset, people on the verge of tears, people with legitimate concerns that wouldn't move anybody. Not one council member voted with the crowd or even seemed to consider what was said. Nope. They all voted to approve it. Five oh.
By the way, for the record, um, you don't have to answer, but, um, for people who are interested in knowing where you stand, do you personally support Prop One? What's your philosophical?
I don't support Prop One. I'm pro-choice, but Prop One puts no limits.
In terms of like the, the stage, like the trimester, yeah?
On viability or on the number of weeks? And I have no idea. I've, I've heard people say, well, no, you know, nobody would get a full-term abortion. I can't imagine anybody that would. But why would they pass that? I mean, even all of Europe puts limits on the number of weeks. And I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about a woman, um, who's been raped. Number one, usually they have an abortion very quickly, obviously. I'm not talking about, um, a mother who's found out the horrific news that her, you know, six, seven, eight months fetus baby isn't viable anymore. They didn't even write that into the bill. They could have written that in. I don't know why they didn't. I think it was, it looked to me like a knee-jerk reaction to the Roe decision. But I, I can't. I'm, I'm a, a mother of four, a daughter of one, granddaughter of four. I, I just can't do that with no limits.
We are running low on time, so I wanted to move to something that you specifically requested us to, to discuss, and we probably don't have time for a couple of comments on it, but, um, with the Cardiff School, Elementary Law School, the Cardiff Elementary School lawsuit, can you sort of explain, again, you know, for maybe some of our listeners aren't as familiar with this, just sort of briefly, what's at stake here and why you've taken the position that you, you have publicly?
Thanks. Um, I'll try to keep it super simple. The school, the residents of Cardiff passed a bond for the school to rebuild at Cardiff Elementary, at the Cardiff Elementary site, where a tiny little We're a tiny little school district and only the residents of nine two double oh seven go to Cardiff Elementary School District. So we are the only ones that voted on the bond and passed the bond. The school started building and they found out there was a property dispute from an old land grant that they had gone into in partnership with the city of Encinitas. Everything hit the fan after that and during this process, I stood with a group, sorry, a group of neighbors then sued the school to, to try to control what would be built and what wouldn't be built and where it would be built. I'm, I'm oversimplifying because most people know this story. I stood with the school then and I stand with the school now. The changes, the, the lawsuits with the uh delays in construction are gonna cost taxpayers in Cardiff a few million extra over the bond that we voted for and I'm against that. I think all this could have been solved without lawsuits and I think uh different people and a different era would have been a completely different outcome. We had some very aggressive neighbors going after that. My, but the people that did sue the schools are, that group is, is wholly financially and personally supporting my opponent. And when Joy, and Joy doesn't li, Joy lives over by Oak Crest, so she's not in nine two double oh seven. So she didn't uh vote for the bond and her property taxes won't be affected. So when, it was disappointing that she didn't know more about it, but she, like most people in Encinitas outside of Cardiff, they know little about it. And that was the case, but um, yeah, it's, it's disappointing for someone to run for district, to represent the district and not have a good handle on that because there is, it affects everybody in Cardiff greatly and it did. It was a tough time for fa, young families with kids that wanted to go to their kindergarten class over there, not a trailer up at Ada Harris. Very tough and it costs a lot of money.
Sure.
And I don't agree with that, that's taxpayer dollars.
Mm-hmm, and um, what's the latest update, by the way, on that?
They are all systems go. The building that the whole fight was over is the multipurpose room. So there were two lawsuits, cost the school district millions and the school district still gets to do exactly what they set out to do. So they were all for nothing. Yeah, so that's frustrating.
Any final comments, Julie?
Oh. Just to thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Absolutely, thanks for coming on.
I, I feel, it feels awkward to me that my opponent's not here, but.
Yeah, and just to be clear for the record, we um, we did invite Joy on, she wasn't able to make it, but um, no, I appreciate you coming on, Julie.
Yeah. Thank you.
Made a great interview and um, yeah, I uh, um, just wanted to uh, you know, commend you for, for coming onto the program, so. This has been another episode of Stay Classy San Diego with your host, Steve Wire. Thanks again to our sponsors, Max Lux Media at maxluxmedia.com and Barn Time Productions at barntimemusic.com. And thanks to all of our listeners for tuning in and viewing the show, we'll see you next time, stay classy, San Diego.